I did. Jim Shipley won't pay me to read it. That guy better not sabotage us today, though, I'll say that. Said that fellow better not sabotage us today, though, I will say that.
I'd like to call this October 2nd meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
We could all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
No approval.
Thank you.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Alright, brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. On item two, let's see. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September the 18th, 2008. Do we have a motion?
No approval.
Motion and a second, any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 080... Excuse me. 080920, increasing electrician's licensing fees. Sponsor, Mr. Jeff Littler.
Mayor and city council, this is the second reading on increasing our electrician's licensing fee from $10 to $50. Since the last council meeting, we've had no calls or comments about this. Ask for your approval.
Do we have a motion?
No approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to new business. Item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 080916, closure and abandonment of a portion of an alley behind St. Michael's Episcopal Church located between East 6th and East 7th Streets. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this request was submitted by the church and the alley is located adjacent to their property. The portion of the alley is depicted on the screen. It's located south of East 7th Street between North Washington and Alberta Avenues. It has a surveyed width of 15 feet and the portion requested for closure is approximately 165 feet in length. The alley is developed with a paved surface and runs from East 7th Street to East 6th Street. Two parcels are contiguous with the subject portion of the alley. Parcel 11 on tax map 53C, Group B to the east, and parcel 12 of the same group map on the west. Both of these parcels are owned by the church, so the church owns both sides, this section and this section. There are five parcels which are contiguous on either side of the portion of the alley that would remain open to the south. The owners of these properties were notified by the planning department. There was no opposition to the closure indicated at the planning commission meeting by the property owners, however, one of the owners, Mr. Ray Smith, who owns the two southern tracks, these two tracks, did speak at the planning commission and request that any funds from the sale of the portion of the alley be used to improve the portion that will remain open. The applicable city departments have reviewed the closure and abandonment request. There is a sewer line that's located within the right of way and the water quality control department has requested that utilities might be retained for the entire length and width of the alley should it be closed and abandoned. The planning commission has recommended for approval of the closure and abandonment and sale of the portion of the alley as requested with the establishment of a minimum bid price based on the per square foot tax抵值 value of the adjacent properties, subject to the retention of utilities as requested by the water quality control department. The planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No approval.
Second. We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Were the other property owners notified and were they interested in purchasing the rest of that, or?
There was no indication of that at the planning commission meeting.
Is there a reason to keep that, the rest of that, as an alley since it does not go through anymore?
Well, it's actually used. This is paved and these properties do use this as access. This apartment, this is an apartment complex here and this is used to get in and out.
And what about garbage?
This house also uses it.
Garbage trucks go through there also?
No, I don't believe the garbage trucks go through there. That was reviewed by Public Works and they don't go through there.
Well, also, I think I read in your minutes of the commission, planning commission, that maybe Mr. Smith or someone had concern about the condition of the alley.
Yes, that's...
Could someone speak to that? Does it really need to be upgraded somewhat if it's left open?
Well, it's not in great shape, and again, that's what he asked, that, of course, the planning commission made no recommendation to the council, but he did request that the funds that we would receive would be used to upgrade that section of the alley.
But all the adjoining landowners were notified?
Yes, they were.
Any further comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to abstain from this vote because I'm a life, well, not a lifetime, obviously, but...
You hope it's the last of your life.
I'm a longtime member of St. Michael's and I don't want anybody to think that I'm showing any favoritism.
Alright, thank you.
One way or the other.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries. One abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 080917, historic overlay zoning for 105, 115, 204, 207, 210, 215, 368, and 371 Cherry Avenue, 206 and 216 Holly Avenue, and 115, 125, and 127 East 4th Street. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the historic zoning and planning commissions have recommended that historic overlay zoning be established for these 14 properties which are located on East 1st and 4th Streets and Cherry and Holly Avenues, and that the properties be included in the North Dixie Avenue Historic District. The procedure for the establishment or expansion of a historic overlay zone is provided in Section 232.4 of the zoning code. The process requires the recommendation of the historic and planning commissions and the approval of the city council. Additionally, the zoning code requires that two-thirds of the property owners proposed for historic overlay zoning favor such zoning. At the request of the Historic Zoning Commission, the planning commission completed a study earlier this year on the possible expansion of the North Dixie Avenue Historic District. The study consists of 34 parcels of property located west of the Historic District along Cherry Avenue from East 1st to East 4th Street. The owners of the 34 parcels were polled as to whether they favored historic overlay zoning for their property. The poll indicated that the required two-thirds approval could not be achieved for the entire area. Generally, those property owners who resided in the area favored historic zoning and those who did not were opposed. It was determined, however, that two smaller areas consisting of six contiguous parcels located along East 4th Street and eight contiguous parcels located along Cherry and Holly Avenues would meet the approval requirement. The area on East 4th Street up here, which consisted of six parcels, in that area we did achieve two-thirds, exactly two-thirds. Four out of the six indicated they were in favor. One of the other two did not respond and one was opposed. The one that was opposed has now indicated that he is no longer opposed to the historic zoning. The Cherry Avenue or the southern portion consisted of eight tracks. Six of those eight responded that they were in favor, which gave a 75% approval. The other two never responded to the poll, but you do have two-thirds approval in both. With the exception of the property at 105 Cherry Avenue, which is zoned as CN Commercial Neighborhood, the underlying zoning is RS-15 Single Family Residential. Eleven of the parcels are used for single-family residential purposes, two are used for multifamily residential purposes, and one is used as a professional office. The parcels used for multifamily residential are non-conforming. According to the records of the property assessor, the construction dates, or age of these structures range from 1900, which is at 210 Cherry Avenue, to 1986, which is the professional office at 105 Cherry Avenue, with 11 of the 16 structures more than 50 years in age. Again, the historic zoning and planning commissions have determined that the subject properties comply with the requirements for historic overlay zoning and have recommended that they be included within the North Dixie Avenue Historic District. The planning department concurs with these recommendations.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Our motion, we need a second?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments? Oh, excuse me. Yes, ma'am, if you could just identify yourself.
Is that open? I'm Grace Forrest, I live at 215 Cherry Avenue. And you've heard of, from me before, and I have gone through the reasons, one, keeping a viable neighborhood around track, two, to preserve not a grandson section of Cookeville, oh Cookeville, but a typical first housing tract section. And I just want to add tonight that personally, I've been searching for words about why I want to preserve this, but I just find the whole area very endearing.
Thank you. Any further comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, I'll call for a vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 080918, rezoning a portion of 929 West Jackson Street from RD Single Family and Duplex Residential to CL Local Commercial. Sponsor, James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the location of the property and current zoning is depicted on the screen. The proposed rezoning was initiated at the request of the property owner, Mr. Rebecca Ting. The subject property is identified as a portion of parcel 1902 on tax map 53H, Group F. According to a recently approved subdivision plan, the property consists of approximately 8.87 acres. The current zoning of the subject property is split with the majority approximately 0.51 acres zoned as CL and the remaining 0.36 acres zoned as RD. The property, let me go back to the zoning map, is contiguous with CL zoning to the north and west and south, and with RD zoning to the east. Our future land use plan indicates that this property would be best suited for commercial use. The property is accessed from a major arterial street and has adequate utilities available. The impact of the proposed rezoning on adjacent or nearby property should be minimal. The only non-commercially zoned property contiguous with the subject property which is zoned as RD and used for multifamily residential purposes is also owned by Ms. Ting. This surrounding tract is where the apartments are located and is also owned by Ms. Ting, and you can see it also on this zoning map. The proposed rezoning has been approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Any comments from neighbors in the area?
No, we've had no comments for this whole process on this rezoning.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item seven, consider resolution 081023, authorizing submitting an application to the Building Finance Committee of the Tennessee Board of Economic Growth to acquire a certificate of public purpose and necessity. Sponsor, Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Mayor and city council, this resolution authorizes the city of Cookeville to apply for a certificate of public purpose and necessity. Obtaining this certificate is one of the steps in the financing of our business park. The Industrial Park Act and the Local Government Public Obligations Law allow for the issuance of, excuse me, bonds for projects to finance industrial parks. Both acts require a certificate of public purpose and necessity. We should be submitting this application approximately the 1st of December, and we expect to hear something within 60 days. I'd be happy to answer any questions and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No approval.
Second.
We have our motion and our second, any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience?
How long do you think this will take after, I mean, once it's granted, it's granted? Is that how it works?
Yes, we're hoping within 60 days.
Right, and then after that, it's, we're good to go?
Yes, and it's good up to three years.
Okay.
Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Item eight, consider approval of change order for water plant intake project. Sponsor, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight seeking approval of a change order at the water intake project. During that project, there was a couple of items that came up. There was some tree removal at the front of the intake. I'll show you some pictures here in a second, go over that, but there was some tree removal that became apparent in front of the intake structure. That was $4,370. The wet well had a bunch of debris built up over the years, 38 years of debris built up and sediment that needed to get cleaned out. In your memo to the council, I had put a maximum number because we had invoked a time and materials clause in the contract. They have since finished that, and so that's about $1,000 less than that. That number's $10,980. There's a deduct of $1,654 where we changed some cable out for some closed-circuit TV cameras there. And then there's a $9,970. It's a programming and testing to add new rod water intake pump station screens on our SCADA system that will tie into the membrane system that we just recently put in. I'll go, here's the intake structure, and you can see the notch that's been cut out when it was built, and in here you can sort of, I'm just trying to get you a picture where you can sort of see what it looks like. This is the cutaway of the structure. This is the bottom, the normal water level's about here, and then there's two intake gates that we can pull from different levels of the lake. There's a traveling screen that runs up and down that pulls, anything that's pulled through from the pumps gets trapped on some screens, and then they're pulled out, and that's when it became apparent, and that was the screen sections. Here's when the problems became apparent while they were doing that because they had to get out in front and move all these trees out of the way because they were wet and they couldn't get it in there. And this is the notch, and you can't see because the lights are on, but as the lake and waters pulled in, you know how, when the high water, trees float around, big sticks, they gradually migrate into that portion of the, into that channel? And so, part of this was, and this is the diver right here, they pulled and hooked cables to those things and pulled all that stuff out to get them away from those gates. This is inside the wet well where the pump's set. In those screens, one of the reasons we were placing the screens, the screens had become broken down, so sediment leaves and stuff like that were being pulled in. That's just a photo of that. Here's a line on the wall, he's standing on the floor, but you can see they were sort of, it was getting built up, and then there was depressions around the pump columns. This one's interesting. This is shell, mussel shells that were, are pulled out. Mussels get in and get pulled in, there are larvae come in and they grow in there, but with the screening, this shouldn't be an issue, and that's what the majority of this cost is on this, and I would recommend approval.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion by the council?
When do you think this project might get to be over with and finished?
Scheduled for January, somewhere into January. The pumps, the holdup right now is waiting on the manufacturer of the pumps. They were just had such a huge lead time.
And this is some maintenance that we're doing that hadn't been done probably in 10 or 15 years at least?
Well, the whole project or just...
No, I'm talking about cleaning out the intake.
Well, to my knowledge, the bottom of the wet well's never been cleaned out.
Yeah.
Is this affected by the lowering of the lake by the core while they do the dam repair?
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, so the lake levels are down significantly. I'll show you where they are when I get that cutaway. Here's summer level here. 626 is here, and so the lake level's down to about right in here right now. So this top gate's out of the water, you know? They're scheduled to get down somewhere right into here.
And so, what does that mean for us?
It just means we can't pump as much water out as the lake drops.
Right.
The head pressures, we can't pump as much water out.
How much are coming out, about 10 million a day, or?
Right now, no, we're pumping more than that out right now. We're pumping probably 14, 15 million gallons at a day right now.
But this re-filtering system that we just put in as part of this...
You're talking about the membrane?
Yeah, the membrane system helps give us a cushion as it relates to demand that we didn't have a year ago.
That we didn't have.
That's right.
And I'm glad we've got it.
I am too.
Because it's gotten, everybody knows it's real dry again.
We didn't have rain event in September. Was there a rain event in September?
Two tents.
Two tents.
Two tents have been in, the whole month. And October's typically one of our driest months also, so...
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Consider awarding bids for the Tennessee Tech University Drainage Area Sewer Rehab Project. Sponsor, Mr. Kelly.
We opened bids on the Tennessee Tech Drainage Basin Rehabilitation of the sewer system over there, and I can't remember if it's been two or three years, maybe four years ago now. We did half of the basin because we were applying for CDBG grants, and we got a grant at that time, but we could only get enough to do about half the basin. So we kept applying with Ms. Andrews' help, and she's been great helping us identify areas that we could, that we would be eligible to receive a grant. So we focused in on that area and was able to get a grant, and we've kept applying the last couple of years, and we're fortunate enough to get another grant this time, so we went and bid the project. The total project bid was $729,925. Our CDBG grant is $257,000 that we'll be getting, which is about 35%, excuse me, it's about 35% of the project. City's cost will be $472,925, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Just had a quick question I forgot to ask on Monday. When we did this other project four years ago, did the, because these are existing older lines, was there a big growth as far as change orders or unexpected items? Because there was a huge difference between the two bids here. Was there any concern from your department's part?
No, the InSiTU formed technologies is historically the ones that get the projects.
Okay.
And there's enough items, it's broken, then I've got the breakdown here. It's by foot, by manholes, by laterals and so forth, so we haven't seen a big, any surprises in these things. Gene asked me the other day, the area, this is Tennessee Tech's down in here, Willow Avenue, Jerry Witzin School, and the area in red is the section. We accomplished this last, the last project was down in this area. This will get the upper section.
It's an older section of town.
Yes, it's just the older sections of line that we know there are some problems there. This will TV, identify, we'll review the TV logs, see which sections need to be replaced or repaired. It's sort of the cured-in-place is like the inverted tube sock where it's a fiberglass lined. We may have to dig up some just to be able to get cameras through, but that's usually, we try to do it that way.
We had an issue with some personal property damage out in that area last year with some students.
Yes.
Is this going to fix whatever caused that?
It should, it should help.
And I'd like to compliment our grant writer, I'm assuming Kathy, that you did the CDBG on this, and it's pretty amazing to get a CDBG funded for Cookeville, Tennessee, so that was good. Thank you. Any further comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 10, consider appointments to the planning commission. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, due to the resignation of Ms. Nina Lund, a vacancy currently exists on the planning commission. The planning department respectfully requests that the council fill this vacancy. The person appointed by the city council would complete the remainder of Ms. Lund's term, which would expire on January 2009.
Do we have a motion and a second to receive this resignation and fill this position?
Make that motion to receive this and nominate Randy Dalton to fill the term.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further nominations? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item 11, consider appointment of member to the Environmental Appeals Board. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, Larry Roberts' term on the appeals board has expired. I've not been able to contact him to see if he'd like to be reappointed. I have contacted Bob Fallhaber. He's agreed to serve, and I'd like to recommend him be appointed.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move.
No, go ahead.
I move that we appoint Bob Fallhaber as a new environmental appeals board member.
Very good, do we have a second?
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
How long is this, oh, this is a five-year term? Okay.
Do they only meet when needed?
Just when needed, yes.
Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 12, consider awarding bid for a street sweeper truck. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently participated in an online bidding process for a street sweeper. Process involved potential bidders submitting specifications to us to be pre-approved before they participated in the bid. We had three manufacturers that were approved. We conducted the bid online. The low bidder of the process was CMI Equipment, $162,750. I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion by the council?
Much-needed sweeper truck, going to replace one that's been a problem.
Now, we want to sell that truck, remember?
Problematic for us. It's good that we can get this done, too. This is good. And this is a little bit different than the other one, this one actually has a vacuum.
It's a completely different technology, yes.
It's a vacuum type, right?
Was this budgeted or bond issued, or?
There goes the warrant.
It's from State Street Eight.
State Street Eight, okay.
Any further comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. If you would please come and identify yourself at the lecture.
My name is Brian Gibson with HH Shipper Machinery. Obviously, we were $186 and I believe 24 cents higher than the next bidder. I just want to make everyone aware of how the process works, and you may already know, but normally in a bid, we have, where we go in and have a sealed bid, where we submit specifications, and obviously, the city has the right to look at the sealed bid. In this case, our specifications were the only ones, we were the only people that met the entire specification, but because of the type of bid that you did with the reverse auction, it puts it in a situation to have competitive bidding. You had to accept other bids and the specifications that were not, that were not equal. Also, in this bid, there's a 3% charge to the city, obviously, that we have to put into our bid to add on, and in this case would be, obviously, $5,000 some odd dollars in this case, that either CMI or myself or whatever, we have to obviously add that when considering bidding to the city. My question is, is, obviously, this is a little bit different type of bid situation. If you were to bid this conventionally, you would already have a 3% less bid, and this, like I said, this would be a $5,000 some odd dollar less bid that would come in. And you have, in that instance, if the competitor, CMI, comes in with a far lower bid, in the case of the online bidding, he stopped when he found the bottom, so to speak. In other words, when he found that he was below our bid, he stopped, reasonably so. In the case of a sealed bid, he would not have that opportunity, he'd have to bid at his lowest price at that point, which that leaves him from not having that type of option. of option. Obviously, if you were to rebid this, it would put you in a situation that you would instantly have a over $5,000 savings if you were to purchase a sweeper from me and possibly several thousand dollar savings. And at that point, you would have the opportunity to look at all of the, all of the specifications and it would be up to, you know, it would be up to determination of the city that they could, you know, if he was several thousand dollars lower or whatever, he could, you could look at those specifications and determine, obviously, a lower bid would make more sense.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. You said that in this, the way this process works, which I, I'm not familiar with this, I'm, I'm learning right now as well, you said when he got, he found the, the bottom and stopped bidding, so did you not, did you not have an opportunity to bid lower?
I, I bid as low as I felt comfortable bidding.
Okay.
But what I'm, what I'm telling you is, is he didn't, in this situation, obviously, he only has the ability to see what I see from his screen, that he is either first, second, third, or in this case, there were only three bidders, but if there were 10, you know, it would, it would give you a place. And once he put himself into the first place, he stopped. In a sealed bid situation, you don't have that situation. You have to come in at the lowest possible bid that you, because you don't know what the next person, what I'm saying is, is he would probably have bid lower. And I know my bid would have been 3% lower to the city because I had to add, obviously, what I felt was a reasonable margin to start with. Then I had to add, so I had to kind of back into this and I had to add another 3% to accommodate what I was going to have to pay in this case to a company called BidBridge for them to do the online auction.
But arguably, doesn't he have to compensate? And I don't know if he's here to defend himself.
Oh, he certainly does.
But he, but doesn't he have to compensate for the three, same 3%? So if you remove the 3% from both sides of the equation, then he's still $186 lower, correct?
He would be $186 lower.
Okay.
But, we don't know that he may have gone three or four thousand dollars lower had he not known where to stop.
But, but you could have bid, could, uh?
I would have the opportunity to bid until I had no profit or I could have given it to the city if I so felt charitable, I guess.
I understand and everyone, anybody that's selling something should make a profit. I'm, I'm not suggesting that. I'm only, I'm, I'm trying to understand, you could have bid lower though, had you chosen to and, and obviously it would have come out of your margin, then he could have bid lower. It, it could have continued, right? Or did, was there some reason you didn't? I'm just beyond not wanting to give away more margins.
We put in, we put in a bid that we felt was, had a margin that was reasonable to start with. But what I'm saying is, we started out, our specifications, we were the only bidder that met all the specifications. But to put yourself in a situation where the three of us could bid, you had to accept specifications that were not the same. Now, it may be that after you get, you know, the city has the right to accept any or reject all or whatever they, they deem fit for the city, but obviously those type of things should be up to, you know, to Greg Brown or whoever, you know, those type of decisions. This puts you in a situation that is entirely, the specs are taken out of the situ, out of the picture. And I guess what I'm asking is the city still had to pay for, for Greg Brown to write specifications and do all these other things. I don't see the value of BidBridge coming in and charging, in a sense, they're charging the city 3% because obviously I have, I have to charge the 3% to turn it around to the city.
It seems that the process, and I think Councilman Shelton's alluding to this, is that you would have had the opportunity to have bid lower. And when you did, then he would have had the opportunity to bid lower. And then you could have returned and bid lower and that would have driven our cost down. And so, I guess maybe the hope was, and I can't speak for Mr. Brown, but was that the process of this bidding, the way that it allows people to, if they're really hungry, bid lower, then it would have been lower for the city.
But in, in, in reality, in a sealed bid, we have to come in with the lowest bid that we possibly, we only have one chance.
Right.
This is not this type of situation.
Right.
And there has to be a point in which.
You started out with a margin and to work, so you have room to work and wiggle down under this scenario.
Right. And in other words, I, I put in what I felt was, was a reasonable, reasonable margin. But I'm saying if you were to rebid this, obviously it would, it would start out at 3% less than what you've got now.
Even with the cost of materials being what they are, how rapidly things like that are going up, do you think?
Obviously, you can rebid it in whatever the legal time is, what, 14 days or whatever at the local, I, I don't think you're, the cost of materials are going to make that much difference in.
It is, uh, it is changing. Cost of raw materials is changing dramatically.
I, I understand. I, I sell equipment with a lot of metal.
That's what scares us.
That's what makes us more nervous than anything.
We're not real high on BidBridge either after, after trying it.
But what I'm saying is, is you have the right at this point to reject any and all bids. And it may, it may be that he comes in and CMI is here, it may be that he comes in four or $5,000 less than I, it, it certainly might be.
It sounds to me like that you're.
That you have the potential at that point to select his machine.
If we could get Mr. Ray to.
I was like, you, you, but you know, you say in a sealed bid, you could, you have to give your best bid, but in this case, you had the opportunity to lower your bid just by two, by just a few hundred dollars and you would have had a better bid. So you, you actually had an advantage in this situation that you wouldn't normally have.
I had to give my best bid in this situation. I hit the bottom of where I felt comfortable. What I'm saying is you do not know, there's no way of knowing whether he put in his lowest bid.
Well, he, all he had to do was beat your lowest bid and he was going to get it anyway because the specs were pre-approved by Mr. Brown and his department. So, you were the three qualified bidders and you had the opportunity to, to bid just a few hundred dollars and, you know, I don't know what your margin is, but if it's that razor thin.
It's not as much as I thought it might be.
Well, it's a.
Well, and it sounds to me like that your, your biggest concern is, is your lack of excitement about bidding in a vehicle in which we don't have any control over. I mean, we, we selected BidBridge to purchase this piece of equipment and, and if, if you're not comfortable with that scenario of bidding, then maybe you're, you've learned a lesson that maybe I don't want to do BidBridge anymore. But as for us, you know, we found three people, we accepted their bids, the lowest one's not yours. I'm in the construction business, we bid work every day and there's a lot of times I'm not low, there's a lot of times that I am too, so.
But this gives you a situation that it does not allow the city to review the specifications at that point. In other words, once he has accepted the specifications, if, in my.
No, I think you're mistaken.
You have to accept low bid, don't you?
No, sir, I think that Mr. Brown's department reviewed the specifications from each of the bidders and pre-approved those in advance, otherwise they wouldn't have qualified to even bid.
But did the other bidders meet all of the initial specifications that he submitted?
They, they met the specifications required to, for the city to have a street sweeper that was within the, within what Mr. Brown desired to purchase. They, they did that fundamentally for sure. But like I say, you had the opportunity, the last opportunity was yours for just a few hundred dollars. And if your margins are really that thin, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but if you'd done a sealed bid and this, these, this gentleman, if they'd, if they'd beat you, if they'd beat you by $3,000, their margin, they may have better margins than you. I don't know why their bid is lower, but you had, you had an opportunity in this scenario that you did not have in a sealed bid, just like when I go to the art auction and you, and you, you go by and they have the clipboard there and you write your name and whoever gets the highest, that's the last person on the list gets it and you have an opportunity to beat that person. So, well, if you have a sealed bid, you just put yours in and you don't know whether you win or lose, it's kind of like the lottery. So, I think you had a better opportunity in this particular scenario.
Well, I learned my lesson. I won't, I won't meet the specifications that were sent out and I'll, I will dub down the machine and try to just meet the intent of the specifications.
Well, in, in Mr. Greg Brown's defense, our Public Works Director, he reviewed specifications from three different firms and accepted those firms because of the minutia that was the difference between them was not great enough to deny them the ability to bid for the city of Cookeville. And so, I think that he is to be commended for the time that he spent in making sure that these three proposals did meet the specification. And I don't think it was dumbed down in any stretch of the imagination. I feel like that the sweeper truck that he's accepted or recommended today is going to be a good one for the city of Cookeville, not to say that yours wasn't, but it did meet, it did meet the requirements that he was looking for or he wouldn't have accepted those bids, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gibson. We appreciate your comments, thank you. If we have further comments, please come and identify yourself.
We, we try to keep our comments to about three minutes, there was some discussion there and that's fine, but if we, if we could try to limit it to about three minutes.
If I take any more than three, it's because you guys are asking questions. My name is Stan Brooks, I am a National Account Manager with BidBridge and wanted to show up tonight for the simple fact that this is a situation that does often arise in a first, a first bid with us, electronic sealed bid. I'd like to also commend Mr. Brown and Mr. Davidson on their foresight to be a little bit progressive in this process that we do. The purpose of BidBridge is to get the cost of your goods and services that you're bidding to true market value. That $186 is true market value. That is the lowest that that could go on the street, no matter how you look at it. And that is our purpose. It doesn't matter if we're doing street sweepers, fire trucks, construction, but we are trying to get things to true market value at $186. HH Hooper, as we were watching this bid, they put in a one and done bid and we watched the bid all the way down and they never entered another bid. CMI, they kept on and they kept looking and they actually used the process like it was supposed to be used. And we were hoping that, that Hooper would, would participate and enter another bid, but it, it didn't happen. And yes, the margins aren't there, but really, the city of Cookeville is looking for the best price, period. The state of Tennessee in Senate Bill 2182 has agreed that the reverse auction process is the best format in which to find true market value and let your city realize savings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
John, excuse me, I'm John Scott, CMI Equipment. I just want to state that Hooper did have the opportunity to bid and I think y'all understand the, the situation. Our sweeper does meet the specs, they had an opportunity, as it was pointed out, Mr. Brown had an opportunity to look at the specs and he could have kicked me out before he ever let me bid. But I did meet, meet the, the specs. No, it's not the exact same as the spec that was put out because Timco was the only one could meet that. But we have a, you know, bigger engine, auxiliary engine, we have larger hopper, we exceeded a lot of the, the expectations of the bid, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear, clarified.
Very good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the audience?
One, one question, so the bid, so the, your bid, BidBridge process, the, the winning bidder pays the percent, is that a pre-established?
That is correct. We do a tutorial with all vendors that are going to participate and one of our, we do a couple of things. One, we help to strategically source. So, if Mr. Brown or any department is looking for equipment that they cannot find, and a lot of times you'll find some sole source stuff that we can't participate in, it doesn't work. But a lot of times, the departments, they don't have the manpower to go out and look for additional vendors that could help to make the process work, even if it is a traditional paper bid. So we help to strategically source and do these type of things. And everyone, every vendor that is approved by the department that is, we don't approve the vendors that participate, that has to be done at the department level. Once that, once that happens, we give them a tutorial, we are contractually obligated or tied with the winning vendor, not the city of Cookeville. So, CMI knew that there was a 3% fee, they still drove it down. Everyone that is involved in this process knows that there is a fee. So, there's no direct charge to the city of Cookeville, but if I'm not mistaken, I think the budget on that was $170,000 that had been budgeted for that truck initially when the budget was passed earlier in the year. It's for roughly 4.2% savings. It's not our greatest, we average 13% across the board, but 4.2%, another six, $7,000 comes in handy in the city budget, I think. But they do know that when you get the paper process in, Hooper's truck might have come in at $175,000, CMI might have been $165,000. So there's that huge difference in price that we try to eliminate and generally, our first and second place bids are about, about 0.5% off, just really driving it down to market value.
Very good, thank you. I'm looking forward to some clean streets. Do we have any further comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 13, consider emergency repair of front load sanitation truck, sponsor Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we had a couple of cylinders go out on one of our front load sanitation trucks. We had to get those repaired. The cost, including the freight, was $5,075.28. I'd recommend your approval.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Some moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing no further discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, Greg.
Yep, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg.
That concludes the items on our agenda tonight. We do have some special guests with us tonight, a good friend of the city council, Dr. Earl Hutchinson in his advanced journalism class from Tennessee Tech University, some good friends of mine. I spent some time with you guys here a couple of weeks ago and can't believe you wanted to listen to me again after all that. Thank you all for coming tonight and Dr. Hutchinsons, we appreciate the warm bodies at our meetings, thank you for bringing those students. At this time, we also open up the floor for a hearing of citizens and/or delegations. If anybody would like to get up and speak for up to three minutes and bring your ideas and comments to the city council, feel free to do so at this time. And I also open up the floor to the city council for giving you unlimited access to time. Any comments from the council?
There is a group of, I read this in the newspaper and I also got an email and I just thought this was kind of interesting, so I thought I'd put it out there.